Call this work session of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Jay Matt Davis.
Oh, well, sorry. Need to come out of executive session.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned executive sessions, any of us say by saying aye.
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 All opposed? This work session of the Brookhaven City Council is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jay Matt Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One. Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Present.
And Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
All right. Opening remarks, I don't have any. Upcoming agenda items. Marie?
Excuse me.
Upcoming agenda items?
Yes. Beginning with number one, consideration and approval and authorization for the city manager and mayor to enter into a contract with TerraMark Land Surveying. This is for stormwater system inventory. This is part of our MS4 permitting requirements in our stormwater plan. Richard can add any additional comments to that. But this will be coming up at a later meeting, but go ahead.
Right, the contract will actually be on the next agenda for approval, but under an MS4 permit, we're required to, every year, to re-inspect 20 percent of our stormwater system. That's the structures and the pipes that make up that system. And so this would be for the first year of doing that first 20 percent of the city. And the contract's actually set up, it's a one-year contract, but it has options in there with pricing. When we did the RFP, we got pricing for five years, so if they do a good job, then we can just do a renewal for the entire, renew it for up to five years before we would have to go out, although if we don't like the work product, we always have that option of redoing the RFP and getting new bids, new contractor involved.
All right. Next.
The next item was just to review the transportation plan. We do have that on the council's agenda this evening, and we'll have a brief presentation by Jamie Cochran, the consultant, along with Richard Meeham. And I saw Joe Pallotti in here earlier. I know he'll be here at the, is he still on the, there he is. And I'm sure he'll have some comments when we get to the council meeting. But the plan is in a position for consideration for approval.
It's broken, it won't work. It went out.
The next item.
Can I go ahead?
Okay, item number three, an ordinance, consideration and discussion of Chapter Four, alcoholic beverage ordinances, pouring hours. We did conduct a survey at the direction of the council. You all have been given copies of that. Did you all, and then the chief is here as well. He has a report that he'd like to present. I'll let you go first, chief, and then I'll round back up with the survey.
Okay. After our last presentation, I was tasked with coming up with a little more information as far as DUI arrests and other statistics that I pulled. I don't know, Marie, did you pass on the, I give you copies of that? Do they have?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
So the first thing, I know Councilman Gebbia asked for a breakdown of DUI arrests, so I did that, and this is on the second page here. Basically, what I did was I pulled a total amount that we had since July 31st, which was 146 DUI arrests. And then I broke it down from the hours between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning, which was 66. And then I broke it down further on there, by each hour, from 2:00 to 3:00, 3:00 to 4:00, and 4:00 to 5:00, and 5:00 to 6:00. As you can see, from 3:00 to 5:00, basically, there were 19, so that's majority of them during that time. The front sheet, I basically went over how busy our officers are during this period of time, from 2:00 to 6:00. First, I mentioned the DUI arrest, which is just a recap. And then I listed citations, ordinance violations from 2:00 to 6:00. We've written 751 tickets or ordinance violations. We made 320 custodial arrests during that same period. And then I tried to break down the serious ones that we've actually dealt with. Aggravated assault, battery, and those are usually with guns, knives, 44. Simple assault and battery, 33. Burglaries, we've had 26 between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning. Carjackings, we had two. Damage of property, 29. Disorderly conduct, 21. Stolen autos, we had 16 stolen autos, usually taken from parking lots. Thefts, majority of them are from vehicles, 61. Wanted persons, the officers arrested, 33 wanted people that they observed on the streets during that period of time. Possession of drugs, 42. Hit-and-run accidents, 28. And a lot of those are ended up, have been DUI. And robberies, 22. During the past couple of weeks, it's increased a little bit, even in that aspect, with some of the violent crimes that we've had. We had a person shot at the Icon Lounge in the parking lot. They took off after that person was shot, and they pulled into a parking lot on Far Road in Peachtree, and Atlanta PD contacted us. We followed up on the case. The person was a jeweler that handled a lot of the jewelry for some of the big rap artists, I guess. We've actually got warrants, and we're in the process of trying to locate, we've got the US Marshals trying to assist us on that, because it's a bad group that's involved with that. We had another armed robbery that started at Confetti's. It ended up going to an apartment on Beaufort Highway, and the person was set up, basically, where another person appeared in the back of the car. We made an arrest on that. The next week, the same person showed up at Confetti's. So somebody recognized him, and we were able to detain him and get a positive ID and charge him with it. But those continue to go on, and what I'm trying to say is, it's not so much just the clubs that these people are at, it's the people, it's throughout the whole city, because you end up with the people going to and from the clubs, and from other clubs to our areas. So, and then the final sheet on here was actually, it was an email I received from Lieutenant of our CID in response to the last armed robbery we had where the person was shot, where we did obtain warrants. But if you read the email, he said Brookhaven's known as that after-hours spot, and so we're getting a lot of after-hours activity coming into the city limits.
Chief, those incidents at Icon and Confetti, what time about roughly did those take place?
One was at 4:30 a couple of weeks ago. I was called to one, it was a home invasion, and I think that one happened at 2:00. In the same time our officers were at the home invasion, we had a couple that was walking down North Cliff Valley, and shots were fired at them. So, and this is just traffic going back and forth between clubs and, between Peachtree and North Druid Hills and Beaufort Highway.
But generally, after 2:00, 2:30?
Yeah. Generally, it starts by 2:00.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea what the time was from the, like, 1:00 to 2:00? What the stats are from 1:00 to 2:00?
No, all I pulled was from 2:00 till 6:00, because that's the time we're concerned. And that, between 2:00 and 6:00 was almost half of the total DUI arrests that we made.
I'd just like to see from, you know, 12:00 to 2:00, if there's similar numbers or, you know, because obviously during 3:00 in the afternoon, that's not going to have a time, the meet hours is where.
We've had DUI arrests at 10:00 in the morning. I mean, it's all throughout the day.
Generally, they don't happen in that, generally, that's not the time they happen.
No, it's unusual, but.
Do you have a recommendation, then, chief?
Yeah, I'd recommend we follow Atlanta's in 2:00 and, you know, out the door, 2:30. Because our activity is increasing. You know, we've had at some of the clubs rave nights. And there, again, like I said, it's, you got pedestrian traffic, we've got just the traffic going to and from the clubs, in and out of the city, and it's throughout the city.
You all have a copy of a survey that was prepared on the 28 clubs.
Mark Kuieman?
Yes, Mark Kuieman did that, so it should be, at your desk. And of.
Send the software.
It's in the software. Okay, thank you. In surveying, then, we, two questions were asked, 2:30. Actually, it was a 2:00 last call, 2:30 close, and then a 3:00 last call and a 3:30 close. Of that, it was pretty much evenly split. However, 15 clubs, one of the later closing, and 13 clubs, one of the 2:00 to 2:30 close. We did ask another question as well, you know, how many of the clubs would be willing to pay for an additional late-night pour, extra time, a permit for that from 4:00 a.m. to even 4:30 closing? And out of that, we had six that said yes, 11 said no, and then 11 said maybe. And part of that maybe was really considering how much it would, extra it would cost, they would need to make the revenue to justify it. We did get a positive comment that they appreciated the city asking them to, for it to be considered, and they just needed to better understand security issues. There was one club that said that. So again, six said yes, 11 no, and 11 maybe for the extra, additional time pursuant to a permit and a fee.
I don't see that 2:00 closing times.
Right, I'm looking at that, and I think this is a typo from Mark Kuieman, and I apologize. That should be 2:00 to 2:30, 2:30 last call, 2:00 last call, 2:30 close, and then 3:00 a.m. last call and a 3:30 close.
Well, I don't think it's a typo, because it's in every part of us.
I know, and I'm going to send him a text real quick, because that was not the, we added additional clubs to this, and as he did, some changes were made, so I want to be sure we didn't capture the wrong information. So I'll have that by the.
Also in the summary.
Excuse me?
It's also in the summary points.
Yeah, I know, so I want to just double-check that. If not, then that would be a 2:30 a.m. last call, 3:00 a.m. closing.
And chief, the Buckhead hours are 2:00 or 2:30 closing? Do you know?
Two.
Is it 2:00?
2:00 to 2:30, 2:00 stop serving. Information on closing hours. Yeah, they didn't ask the 2:00 time.
No, and I'm sending him an email right now, just to confirm. Otherwise, it shows 2:30 last call, 3:00 a.m. closing, and 3:00 a.m. last call, 3:30 closing.
All right. Any movement by anybody on the council about their position on this? I'm in favor of the 3:00, 3:30. Looks like that's the majority of the people they contacted said that. Rebecca was in favor of 2:00, 2:30 before. Bates and Joe, were you all in favor of not doing anything?
Was Casey Dudek contacted at the Chamber of Commerce?
He was.
And what was the response?
His response was, he did provide some names of members, so I shared those with Mark Kuieman, and then I did share the survey results with him.
Okay, more specifically, a follow-up on the creation of a potential restaurant association through the Chamber of Commerce?
Right, he's mentioned that, that he's looking into that.
Does he have any understanding of the time sensitivity here, what we're dealing with? I mean, and the fact that, you know, we have to make a decision because alcoholic permits have to be.
Right.
Put into motion here within a reasonable period of time for these people to continue doing business.
Right. I can't answer that question.
I think we talked about making a year, starting at a year later, anyway.
Right, I mean, he met with the mayor and myself a few weeks ago and mentioned that.
They renew at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, but if we're changing the times on them, we don't want to give them two months to change their business model. I think that's something we talked about last time, not something we approved. We haven't approved anything yet.
I think we, as my understanding, we talked about giving them a couple of months to transition, but not a full year. But that's why we're trying to get this done now.
Didn't you say something different about that?
Yeah. I, you know, I think that my points that I spoke about last time, and it really hasn't changed much, is first priority, I'd like to see, get the business community self-police and explore these options of cost. Have our Chamber of Commerce actually recognize that this has a timeline in which we need to get some action. And if they're not going to engage, then that's fine. We just need to know that, and then it's the business people on their own. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for the Chamber of Commerce to step up to the plate and say, take a lead on this issue and represent the business owners in coming up with a solution. The second thing I talked about was that if we did look to change the hours, that you need to give businesses a period of time to transition. And so my hope was that if we did an hour, you know, a change in hours, it would be active a year later, so that would be for the alcohol license of 2016. You've got significant investments by business owners in their business model, and I don't think that two months is enough time for those owners to be able to change their business model. I appreciate the chief doing all of the study. But I, you know, deep down, I believe that, you know, I'm much more in favor of the free market actually addressing this solution, at least giving them the opportunity to self-police and solve this themselves before we make a business ruling. But I will also say that, at the end of the day, you know, my gut tells me that I would, you know, I think it would make sense to have parity with surrounding jurisdictions, particularly with Shambly's, which I think is that 3:00 p.m., 3:30 out the door. Is that right, chief? They're 3:00, 3:30? So those are my points on it.
Chief, I think I specifically asked last time, looking at the gross numbers, if we were able to decipher what the impact was of Beaufort Highway on these numbers, because these late-night pours are principally going to be Beaufort Highway? If I'm not mistaken? Were you able to decipher that?
Yes, I actually have a list on that. I could provide that to you after the fact, or I probably total it up in a couple of minutes. The important thing I wanted to say, though, is even though the bars and a lot of the establishments that have late hours on Beaufort Highway, all that traffic coming to and from, I mean, we end up with issues on Ashford Dunwoody and 285 and Peachtree Road, you know, where a lot of the places are actually closed, and it's because of the traffic going to and from.
Yes. You did make that point. I was just looking for a numbers type of impact.
Well, I'm going to stick with my, you know, let's go with what, comparable to what Buckhead does, and I'm going to listen to the chief for public safety reasons. I think this amount of traffic and DUIs between 2:00 and 6:00 is just a terrible situation, and I think we're going to see some fatalities. We actually already have, one of the first fatalities was in District One, alcohol-related, at probably the middle of the night, on Johnson Ferry Road. We're just going to see more of that. We've been talking about this since the city began. I just don't know why we're delaying, and the other thing we need to clean up with it, the chief has been asking us since the beginning of the city, is to at least have a consistent closing time every night. Right now, we have two different closing times, it's very confusing. There are odd hours, and it's, we ought to, at the very least, make it uniform across the board, whether it's 2:00, 2:30, 3:00, 3:30, whatever it is. I just think there's a significant public safety issue here, and I think it's something we've been talking about for two years. I don't know why we, Shambly changed their hours overnight. I'm not saying we have to do ours overnight, but we really have been talking about this for almost two years.
Kind of, I kind of agree that, in taking some kind of action. I would be in favor of delaying it to give businesses time, but as far as taking action, I think that we need to do something. All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, what's a reasonable timeframe for the chamber to get an answer? I mean, I think by our next council meeting, or is it a month, 30 days, to give them an
Well, what's, I think we need to view this from a drop-dead date, as far as giving them ample time before submission for renewals on alcohol.
I think that we'll take a, I am in favor of doing a delay, voting on it and saying, next year, this is what the hour's going to be.
I got you.
And so that really takes that issue out of it.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. I think that we also need to incorporate in this some type of response to, are we going to have a program for people that want to submit for after those hours? I mean, what will be the program? Is it a special permit? Are there requirements that go along with it? Some, we have a mix, according to the Kuieman survey, there was a mixed response about, some people didn't want to even consider it, some would consider it, some wanted to know the cost. So I mean, if we're going to have this kind of a policy, and if we are going to offer that option, I'm just suggesting that we seriously look at what the details of that needs to be. And I do want to, I do agree that we have to have, we should at least have one more round with the businesses, and if it's not through the Chamber of Commerce, if they don't ante up, then maybe just a hearing for the businesses.
One other aspect that I'm just going to throw out there is, what's our, what are the current laws about buying and selling beer in a grocery store in the city of Brookhaven? Is there a cutoff time?
Is that, that's a state law?
They all take care of that.
I thought there were different hours in different jurisdictions about when beer stores could sell.
Emily?
No.
No? I've heard of people driving different, you know.
Dry counties and non-dry counties, and some people have Sunday sales.
There are hours on Sunday that you are restricted by law.
Yeah, I'm just talking about beer and wine sales after midnight, or is there a time?
I do believe that, well, your ordinance regulates all of retail establishments by midnight.
By retail, so we do have a retail.
Yes.
And I think it's something like midnight, or maybe 1:00 or 2:00?
I think it is midnight, and that's pretty consistent, 11:30 or midnight, it's pretty consistent with most jurisdictions. You do make differences between retail establishments and the people that sell by the drink for consumption on the premises.
Right, and so the reason I bring it up is if our intent here is to address public safety, and the public safety issue is caused by people driving to and from bars, if they're, if it's just that they want to have a drink, and the only place they can get it, because they can't buy it at the grocery store past midnight, is to drive to a bar, maybe that issue is something that should be considered in this.
I think, for some reason, I think that retail sales are under state jurisdiction, then that we're allowed to have options on Sundays, but I think the rules on retail sales of alcohol is governed by state law. Just like we couldn't, we couldn't make an ordinance that's saying we can open, a liquor store can serve, or a bar can serve before noon on Sunday, no matter what we want, it's the state law trumps that. So I think the same goes for the retail sales, but I, you know, I could be wrong.
I have to look at that specifically.
Do you know, chief?
I believe you're right. Sunday sales have to be at 12:05 or whatever, and the other ones could be set by ordinance or whatever. But in answer to Councilman Gebbia's DUI arrest on Beaufort Highway, out of the 146 that we made during all hours since we started up July 31st, out of 146, 67 were on Beaufort Highway, and out of the 66 arrests made between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning, 38 of them were on Beaufort Highway.
So approximately half?
Two-thirds.
Yes.
All right, well, we got a tight schedule here, we got to move on.
We were hoping, I thought we were going to try to answer, clarify the SLUP issue.
Right.
Do you have that, the SLUP?
The late-night SLUP.
Or is it, Emily, excuse me?
Sorry, Susan.
I believe that your question was whether or not we could require pre-existing late-night establishments to go through the SLUP process? Is that the issue you want resolved?
Well, it was several-fold. The clubs that we inherited, how many of them had the required SLUP that DeKalb required? Because we've had at least one applicant come to us for a SLUP, but I believe we've had some other late-night clubs just open and just stay open late without a SLUP.
For the pre-existing late-night establishments, if it did require SLUP in the zoning designation, it's identical, DeKalb's is identical to Brookhaven's, we would need to do an audit to go back and do an open records request to get those minutes from DeKalb County and create a list. We do have a list of who had liquor licenses in DeKalb County, so we could use that as a starting point, but it would be a project that we would need to undertake, and at your direction, we will proceed.
Well, I'm pretty sure that we received a list of the late-night establishments that had SLUPs early on when we became a city. I'd have to go back, because I know Jeff Rader sent us copies of it as well.
We did put a report together in that regard. In some cases, we could find the information the county had, and in some cases, we could find that the information did not exist. And we did find that there were some SLUPs that we could not find records that ever went through that process.
So are we aware of any clubs that we've licensed that stay open past midnight that don't have a SLUP?
We are aware of one currently that is in violation, that we have met with on several occasions, as recent as two weeks ago. Two, two, I'm looking at Ben, he's met with two different establishments that are actually a problem right now.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, there are actually two establishments that may require SLUPs, being that they're licensed, they receive their business license under the city of Brookhaven. If you recall, we did provide a spreadsheet, sort of giving you a breakdown of existing businesses compared to what we have now and what we've permitted. In terms of the actual SLUP ordinance, I believe, and I'm not really 100% sure on this, I believe it came into play in DeKalb County and possibly in 2008, 2009. I'll probably have to double-check.
You're 2008's, right?
Right, I believe so. So we had the ordinance that we received from DeKalb County effectively stating when they put in that SLUP requirement into effect. But beyond that point, we would have to, like Emily alluded to, look into the actual business license and possibly when the business license was initially issued through DeKalb, and determine were there any breaks in between that initial issuance.
I think the other issue that I'd like to know is, you know, I don't know how wise it is to have this SLUP. You know, we're kind of confused as to whether, who's got it? How we enforce it? Really, one of my issues is just fairness. If we're going to require one business to have it that wants to stay open late, then all of them need to have it. And right now, it's kind of spotty, and that bothers me.
Let's direct that, give us a report on that issue and the two issues she raised before. I'd like to, we need to resolve this once and for all.
I mean, if we want to deal away with the SLUPs, I'm fine with that.
The list of the questionable ones, I don't think is that long for us to go through and investigate on those.
The ones enough to, you know.
And if they have, as Ben alluded, if they've let their liquor license lapse, or it actually says if they have it revoked, the ordinance says if it's been revoked since 2008, then they lose their grandfathered status, and they do have to come through. But right now, they might be considered non-conforming use, so we just have to double-check that.
So I guess what I don't completely understand was the whole rationale that DeKalb had for issuing the SLUPs. I guess it's another, using zoning as an enforcement tool to keep these late-night pour clubs in line? Is that it? I mean, I.
I think it was that they didn't want to have late-night establishments, whether it was a club, a restaurant, anything that was serving alcohol past 12:30 in that particular zoning district.
Keep in mind, you know, the SLUP applies to only those establishments that are with, depending on the consumption of alcohol, past 12:30, within a certain distance.
Residential.
Separation from residential use.
I think it's 15, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of.
And that applies for both nightclubs and late-night establishments, and they may.
So that's why the Afghani restaurant had to come.
Correct.
It could be a restaurant or a bar or a club.
Ethiopian, we need to go by there. Are they open yet?
I don't know. Hey, we got to, we really have to move.
Okay.
So you got direction?
I've been asking about this now for months. If we can just get some clarity about it.
We'll start the open records request and working with DeKalb County.
You know, we need to be fair to our businesses on this.
We need to level, level the playing field on this.
All right.
Somebody, okay.
Thank you. You got it, you got it, Emily. All right. Considerations, ordinance, amending Chapter 18 news notices, apartment inspections, Marie?
Yes. As you know, we amended our apartment inspection ordinance to allow and provide for interior inspections, and this is a, an amendment to that ordinance to provide for the tenant to give us permission. And if permission is refused, then it allows us to obtain a warrant and enter into the unit. And remember, this is in order to conduct audits if we find them necessary, from the standpoint of, on the yearly inspection. to conduct audits if we find them necessary, from the standpoint of, on the yearly inspections that the landlords, property owners are conducting to state that the units comply with code and are up to code. So, that would only really, this would only really occur if we get complaints from tenants. So it really is a complaint-driven inspection as opposed to just arbitrarily going in.
The ordinance itself, by making this amendment, does two things. There's, there's an issue with the landlord as to whether or not there's an unreasonable search that's taking place. With consent going into the unit, then that eliminates that issue. Otherwise, it provides for a procedure where you can seek a search warrant, make an application for that, if that consent is not obtained to enable you to come in and determine if you're, you know, if they're complying with the code. And it's just a means by which to allow the inspections to be done of all of the apartment complexes, without there being an issue concerning, in our opinion, as to the enforceability of the ordinance.
Thank you. Other agenda items?
Well, let me ask a question about that one. I know, I won't spend too much time on it, but, you know, the probable cause, is there any kind of definition in there of where probable cause comes from? I mean, is it from the look of the exterior building? Or do we define that in any way? Or does it have to come from the occupant?
No, I mean, you have, I mean, you have to have probable cause, and, but that would be part of the testimony, part of the process of getting the search warrant. In other words, it'd have to, the judge would have to determine.
It's really not, it's not something we can codify, it's already, that's state law.
All right. Well, we do have a, we've got a large proximity of, or a large number of apartments in our community, 67, I think.
Correct.
And, and so as a, as a rep, a large representative group of a business population in Brookhaven, I would like for us to, to at least have the apartment community have a chance to review this ordinance before we actually put it on consideration. Is this on the agenda for tonight to consider and adopt?
Yes, it is on the agenda. One moment, we do have that.
It is, yeah.
Have either one of you, Marie or Tom, been in contact with the Atlanta Apartment Association?
They contacted us. Penny is here this evening, and I'm sure she'll probably be here for the council meeting. You know, let me just mention that nothing has changed in this ordinance from what you all have adopted, other than now the procedure on obtaining or gaining entry into the unit. The reason why we, just to remind you all, why we went back and amended the ordinance to make it similar to what we were doing for the International Property Maintenance Code for the exterior of the properties, was because we were getting complaints from tenants about rodents or uninhabitable living conditions. And so it has, you know, created a concern that we want to be sure that all, all units do meet code. And we do require the landlords to submit with their application for business license renewal, that they attest that units have been inspected a certain percentage. And we've just had a concern that, especially with the calls that we've been getting, that we should have the ability to go in, because many of the tenants have been timid in sharing the information with us because of fear of some kind of retaliation.
It's, it's a code compliance issue, and it's also, you know, a public safety, health, and welfare issue.
Right.
So, we don't have, we don't have time for the, Penny to speak now, but she could speak during the regular meeting and address from the community's concerns.
It's not, oh, excuse me, so it's on the 23rd?
So it's, that's the next meeting?
Right.
Yeah, that's, I didn't think, so.
All right, thank you.
But we can still take comment tonight?
Yeah.
Well, it's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Well, just in the opening remarks.
Opening remarks.
Correct.
Or in the public comment section at the end of the meeting, we can comment on anything. All right, other business? Update on completion of COVID ordinances?
As you know, we have a sunset on our ordinances, and the city attorney's office is working to cure that issue. And there will be a number of ordinances coming forward before the end of the year, whereby we're going to make them more Brookhaven-oriented than DeKalb County. So, Tom's office is working on that right now. And so just to advise you that these will be coming in, I would expect some would come in batches, and some will come in just dribbles and few, but by the end of the year, we'll, we'll be up to date on all of our ordinances.
Great. All right.
And to the extent that there is any, let's say, potential provocative issues that would require decisions, then we would, we would give you the highlights of that in order that you can deal with those issues. We're not suggesting that each ordinance that we're bringing and carrying over from DeKalb County and Brookhavenizing them will be as intense as such as the adoption of the tree ordinance and that type of thing.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you very much for that comment.
We have an update from the city attorney on our parks and intergovernmental agreement.
Laura's gonna give that report.
Regarding the remaining parks that are coming over, we've been in contact with the county and the county's attorney regarding moving this process forward. We're also working with the DeKalb County Housing Authority regarding some, two additional parcels as for Blackburn 2 Park. Regarding the intergovernmental agreements, we've also been working with the county attorney and the county's office regarding the First Amendment to the Fire IGA. And it's my understanding that that is in committee and is moving forward on their end.
Thank you. Pre-meeting agenda review?
Okay. Under the consent agenda, we have four items, three of which can, concern meeting minutes. The last one is really a formality. This is an easement agreement, giving the mayor authority to sign the agreement. And if you'll recall, this is with Atlanta Gas in order for us to make the improvements to Ashford Dunwoody and Johnson's Ferry. We've been waiting a long time to get this easement, and so we, we finally have it. And so that would, that's why it's on the consent agenda.
Could I hear from Public Works as to the status of this project?
Yeah, we, we've already been talking with AGL coordinating the actual construction. Right now, they're telling me the week of the 22nd of September is when they're expecting to begin the relocation of the, their facilities.
And then when do we start moving trees and paving?
Within 30, they said they need 30 days to move their stuff. We're gonna coordinate with them to see if we can start overlapping our work before they finish their work. Some of it's gonna depend on getting their stuff out of the way first. So, they said no more than 30 days for them to, to get their stuff out of the way. So, the worst case is we would start 30 days later, but we're trying to, we, we're hoping that we can get to the point, in coordination with them, that we can overlap the schedule somewhat.
Okay, so...
Are we still on track for September?
I mean, their, AGL's gonna start their work on September 22nd, or the week of September 22nd is what they're telling me, is, is the latest schedule. That was as of last Thursday, after we got this easement agreement from them.
So we'll be ready, when they start the week of the 22nd, we'll be ready at least by 31 days after they finish.
At least by that, so...
Hopefully, a couple of weeks before that.
Right, right. And if there's, if they're out of the way enough, and we can start going in and doing demo of curb and islands and such like that before they're completely done with their work, we will begin doing our work.
So what do you think is an estimated completion on this project?
I mean, if we can meet, the worst case is if we have to wait the full 30 days for AGL, and, and if they're not delayed in doing their stuff, I mean, we're probably looking end of October, very beginning of November to get this completed.
And how long, how long do you have to wait for that restriping after the payment?
That's 30, 30 days. We'll put some, like we did on Ashford Dunwoody and some of the others, we'll put some temporary striping down in this area.
What if we have a big rain, do you have to still wait 30 days?
Uh, yeah. It, well, the overall 30 days, that's the recommended practice, 'cause of the, it has to do with the oils and the new asphalt and the ability for the thermoplastic to be able to bond to it properly. Otherwise, the, the striping will come up.
You know, in, in these areas where there's a large population of kids walking around in that area, and, you know, it is really not safe for pedestrians when we have that month.
I agree.
If we can have in those contracts that, just like you had in there some teeth and you're contracting for the repayment, if they don't get it done by time, restriping seems to play.
We're also talking about making sure we put in, this time, it was something that was confusion last time, about temporary crosswalk striping as well.
Thank you, Richard.
Well, so I just have two other quick questions. So we will get bike lanes at that intersection and continuing on Ashford Dunwoody?
The, the bike lanes, we're still working on Ashford Dunwoody, what we can squeeze, and what we're looking at is probably shareos, not, shareo lanes, not bike lanes, 'cause there's not enough width there for full bike lanes.
But some, some kind of accommodation for...
Yes, and there'll be additional signs as well, and that's part of what's in the final striping.
So the temp, the striping that's out there now on Ashford Dunwoody Road is temporary?
Still temporary, yeah.
Why wouldn't we have put in the permanent to begin, or where at least it's going to be?
It's, that was, again, the contractor got out there and did it before we were, they were aggressive in getting some temporary striping done, and they got it, the temporary in before we could lay, get it laid out properly with them.
And then the crosswalk improvements that we're doing, both going to Blackburn and going to Cambridge Park, are those on the heels of this intersection?
Probably even before that intersection improvements. We're waiting on acqui, delivery equipment right now. And as soon as we get that, that, we're expecting that equipment to be delivered, latest I heard was this week. And so, I mean, it's any day now, is we're waiting for delivery equipment from the supplier. As soon as that's in, we're gonna get those flashers in. So that's gonna be in even advance of this work we're doing at Ashford Dunwoody and Johnson's Ferry.
And we are gonna consolidate the two crosswalks at Blackburn?
Yes.
Is there sidewalk gonna be torn up on the, is there sidewalk on the park side there? I think there is.
Yeah.
I think there is.
Yeah, they're not planning on tearing up any sidewalk as part of this project.
How big is this thing that the, AGL is moving?
It's not that big. I mean, we're basically putting it into a 10 by 15 easement. So it's, it's mainly electronics. It's just a, it's a valve and some electronics that go with it.
Why does it take a month to move?
'Cause you have to, you have to actually bore over from where it is now to bore over the valve, and that's what they're doing with the construction scheduling.
Thank you, Richard. All right. DeKalb County Salad Sanitation Pilot Program, we're gonna have a presentation on that tonight?
Yes, you're gonna have a presentation.
All right. And we have a Chatcom update tonight?
Chatcom update, we, we did go live on September the 3rd, and, you know, Chatcom is still working with a few mobile carriers, getting those satellite dishes moved or turned. So things have been going smoothly at this point. Thank you to Councilman Madison for being our test that day. We were trying to track him.
I tried. That's about all I can...
But...
I have my own technical difficulties, which is a great thing.
Which is a good thing, 'cause you found out, right.
This is a great thing to remind the public. In my case, from my home phone, I use a voice-over IP called Magic Jack. Yeah, and Gabe dropped my, dropped my landline, but did not go through the process of, of identifying my address, which I had to do with, with online. Took, took 30 seconds to actually do it, but, but now it takes a number, it takes a couple of days for them to actually register that with whatever 911 service. So if citizens, more and more people are going, switching to voice-over IP, if you've got voice-over IP, you need to check with whoever's handling that with 911 to make sure that they've got the right address, 'cause it routes through, you know, an internet server that might not be anywhere near your house.
So where do you go online?
Your provider. So there's, you know, Vonage, Magic Jack, a number of those providers.
Save a buck. Save, save a dollar.
What's that one?
Save a dollar internet.
Save a dollar. I've never heard of save a dollar. I would either. There's one at Costco, Uma. Uma is, you get at Costco, and, and you just connect, plug it right into your router, and then your telephone runs through that. But you need to go through a manual process of 911 to set that.
We'll add that to eBlast in the city limit site, just to alert the public.
It's a great safety check, 'cause I, I mean, when I dialed it, I thought I was ready to go, and it just was 911, and it was dead.
Yeah.
You know, 911 from my cellphone, which is what we, I have used in the past, routed just fine.
All right. Commendations to police officers, we'll do that tonight. All right.
Right. Also, we're gonna have an announcement, and I'll just back up one second, but we'll go into more detail and let the chief do that. But the police department is going to have a first, what will be an annual event of what's a road race called Hot Pursuit. So we'll save that for the council meeting for him to, to give more information.
All right, flip it over.
No tickets will be issued for the fastest guy in the race. Okay. Under public hearings, we do have a few. And first is the consideration of the transmittal authorization for the comprehensive plan. As you know, this goes to the Department of Community Affairs. We will have a, an open public hearing, Mayor Davis. So you'll have to open the public hearing, and then it'll be followed by, if you also desire to move forward on a resolution.
So our comp plan is ready to transmit, according to staff?
It is ready to transmit. It's been to the Planning Commission, and Ms. Cannon will, will give you a, a report on that.
Okay.
Under old business, we do have consideration and approval of the comprehensive transportation plan. We will have that open for the public to comment on further. And this is...
Joe, do you have any comment on that? Are you gonna comment tonight on it? Okay. Are you happy with it? Are you? Okay. Is what?
Joe is gonna comment.
I know, but he's a steering committee guy.
There's more planning to be done.
Hit the, hit the red, the button on there, so it goes green. People in the internet world.
Just hold it down, it'll turn green.
Bush?
There's more planning to be done as you define what these projects are, but this is a good snapshot of what the needs are for the city, what we've gotten back from the, the people from the city. And then it's gonna be your job to prioritize, even though there's a priority somewhat in the plan, there's gonna be an additional priority that you're gonna have to set based on finances.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you. And, you know, steering committee's not going away on that, so hopefully you'll still be involved in helping us set the priorities, 'cause we will, we value your expertise.
Yeah, 'cause again, it's gonna be very important that you budget for some additional study and to find out what these projects really cost. You know, you have a very high elevation cost factor, but as you start to drill down on this, you find a lot of other details, like you're finding out with this Atlanta Gaslight Vault, you're finding out easements and things like that right away impacts. But to be able to move forward with public involvement, the planning and any environmental work is cheap compared to trying to design an object and implement that object. So you have some immediate goals, I think, that need to be discussed for the next year's budget.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate it. And we'll be doing same on the Parks and Master Plan.
Correct. And when we get to that item on the agenda, I do have a number of the comments that were shared at the meeting last Thursday night, so I'd like to read those into the record for you all to consider as part of your, your motion.
All right.
The last plan is the consideration of the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan. Our Development Authority has been very engaged in this, and I would ask if you could just hold off on this to allow them to reconvene, so that they could forward to you a recommendation. They'd like to be able to do that.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
That's all that we have under old business, and we have nothing under the rest of the agenda. But if you will allow me just to go back, I did contact Mark Cooyman, and I did hear back from him. I did ask if he made an error on the, what should have been a 2:00 AM last call, 2:30 close, and he said it's 2:00 AM last call and 2:30 close. You are correct in what I asked. Typo and report, typo and survey, too. The participants commented that it was similar to Buckhead.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. One, or motion?
Yeah, well, I do wanna make one statement, though, about the comprehensive plan, because I, I know that I have some neighborhood areas that I represent that have concerns, that want, want to provide some more input in during this period of time when it's been transmitted. So I just wanna make sure that the public's aware of the fact that this is a move to transmit the plan, but the approval will come once it comes back from Mayor.
That's correct. And if the public still has comments, you know, we welcome them. I mean, they, they need to continue to, you know, forward those to us, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move, we adjourn the work session.
Is there a second? All in favor of this discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll see you in about an hour or so.